I got it at the first try. Okay, we need to come to order. Um, did we get minutes? We didn't get minutes. So we can't prove it. And that's why she's not here. She yelled at us for not getting the minutes. Madam Mayor, do you have anything?
I do not.
No public here to speak of? Donation account. Just a clarification. Put this on the agenda because moving things through all at once would require everybody on board, and I'm not sure everybody was on board. So I'm gonna just ask you to clarify. As far as I see, it's for nonspecific donations to have an account to put them in. And then, why is that an advantage other than just putting the money in a general fund?
Okay, um, so getting back to the beginning, thank you, and I'm always, you know, happy to have any type of an explanation. And we did, you know, because it was free cash certification, we did overload the council with quite a bit of transfers. So I'm happy to have this on the agenda to discuss in finance. The difference is, we do have, you know, several donation accounts.
Excuse me a second. Dan, I gotta ask you to take minutes.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So we do have several different donation accounts, but they're very specific. And that's why you'll always notice it says "for the purpose of." And it could be like the police have different donation accounts for a specific purpose. And I have, believe it or not, which really killed me, had to turn down money because a resident came in and just said, "Look, I'd like to give you a check to just have it be towards something that might come up in the future."
Really?
And I says, "Well, we have," we never like to turn down money, "we have many donation accounts. We have, you know, police, fire, all different ones, toy donation, as you know." And he says, "Well, no, I would like this to be for something that there's, you know, that there isn't one. Something that could be some type of community needs."
When did this happen?
It was a year ago. So, um, we talked about it, you know, going on and on about it, and, you know, so I decided that, you know, it would be a good idea. And Melissa and I discussed it last year at the same time, too. And, um, so we decided that-
So you can't accept a donation if you have no place to put it? Donation account. That's what you're telling me, is that right, Melissa?
Well, I need a, I need a place to put it. But this person didn't want to just put it in a very specific place. He didn't want it to go-
I understand that. So if you don't have a specific, a donation that's specific, the police fund, the toy fund, you can't accept it?
Well, you can put it in the general fund, but then it rolls to what?
Yeah, he didn't, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
The general fund, right, 'cause the general fund is, is not a donation account.
He didn't really want it for pay my salary next year as part of like the appropriations.
For an event. He wanted it to be for an event, but you didn't have anything, or for something that's non-operation.
Exactly.
Is that a good term?
Right, yeah.
Yep, he wanted it to be for a community need. Anything that I saw fit, that, you know, that, oh, that would be a great use of funds. Because, so what we did is, we went through all the, all the different accounts we have.
Fine, and I have no problem.
You know, so, and just like as in a, just like, just like thinking of something off the top of our head, like, we had the Harvest Fest. Okay, we had the Rag Shag Parade. You know, it could be toward any, the funds could be toward any community event, any spirit event, or any type of community need that we have, you know. Could be the, we did our anniversary.
But the key to this is, you said that the person didn't want it to be in the operational fund, which could pay a salary.
Right, no, no, first of all, he wanted it to be, he wouldn't even know that he wanted it to be in a donation account. He wanted it to be in a donation account, nonspecific, to be used when we had a need.
So we need to create, alright, that's fine. Do you have any questions? Dan, on that? Makes sense?
'Cause he wouldn't know about operation account.
Motion to accept the account?
Make a motion to accept the donation account.
Oh, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for that. That helps when you say that what you just said was very good for me. Cleared it up. Um, repeater. She's here. You're off the hook, Dan. We just had the most controversial subject. We put it away.
(laughing).
We're gonna have the account named in your honor, the donation, the pay count of the donation account.
Excellent. As it should be.
Get yourself settled. We're talking to the police, and you know you have to pay attention when you talk to the police.
I didn't do it.
That's not what you say. The first thing you'll say is, "That means you're guilty."
Yeah, exactly.
So, uh, Bob, I have to forgive me, I forget your name.
Ed Murray.
Ed Murray.
Ed Murray is our department's communications guru, so I brought him on in case there are any technical questions that I-
Well, maybe you can explain to the general public who might watch this what the hell a repeater is.
That's why I-
I know what it is. Just so the public knows, I know what it is.
That's why I brought him.
I was giving that heads up by you, 'cause you didn't know what a repeater was.
Go ahead, say it. You did-
You were a repeater.
Oh, well played.
Bottom big, thank you.
You know, actually, that's a kind of a way to put it.
Excuse me, I don't wanna be bottom of the mountain.
But if the two of you are having a conversation, back and forth, people down here can't hear it. But if you put him in the middle, who's gonna shout it out louder, then everybody at the table can hear it. That's basically what a repeater is. The antennas we have at our station, if you take our regular portable radios, like this, it's a five watt portable radio. If you put it on a direct channel, and the captain goes down on Ferry Street or on Varson Street, and I try to talk to him on the direct channel, you can't hear it. So what happens is, on a repeater channel, it takes the weak signal, goes up to the antenna, then it goes down into the repeater boxes, which blows it out at a much stronger signal, and then hits all the radios around. So everybody, no matter where in town, you can hear it.
Now, how far away can you be with that to let it, the repeater, does a repeater have a receiving quality that's even stronger? So if you're up on the mountain-
Correct.
-that radio goes to the repeater?
Yeah, and that, that's correct.
It's to be amplified, in other words.
Right. And a lot of it's line of sight, when you, 'cause that's why, the higher the better. A lot of it's line of sight, 'cause there was one day, I was up on the top of Mount Sugarlo, on my day off, I had my radio in the car, and I was looking out over the valley, and I could actually see our little antenna sticking up from the building here.
Right?
Was able to hit the-
To other mountain?
No, but again, Mount Tom, it's, we're looking down the valley this way, we're looking southbound, Mount Tom would've been to my left.
But if a guy goes to Holley?
Guy goes to Holley, you can't hit it, because the mountain's in the way. And that's why I talk about line of sight.
Why not put a repeater on top of the mountain?
That would be nice.
But we don't own that property.
No, it's something that we're trying to work on, but-
Different conversation.
Yeah, it's a different conversation for a different-
I understand, I'm just-
It comes down to that.
Yep, yep.
And where we're gonna put it.
But this is primarily for East Hampton.
This is only-
So anywhere you're in East Hampton-
And the main reason we're doing it is, and he's passing, the captain just passed a couple of pictures around. The picture in her right hand is the old backup repeater that's like forty-three years old, or something like that. It came from the old station, and it actually was the backup repeater to the primary repeater that was at the old station, which died. When that one died about ten-ish years ago, we bought this one.
I remember that.
Yeah, it was, and this was like thirty grand back then. The new one that she has in her hand, the new one that she has in her hand now is the appropriation that we're looking for. They're getting smaller, and they're getting cheaper.
I like this one.
And they're doing better in the parking lot.
Yeah, like twenty thousand dollars cheaper.
Yeah, the top is just length-
You're not giving up any capacity, any capability.
If anything, with this new one, we're actually gonna gain some capabilities.
You figure, if it's twenty thousand dollars cheaper, something's gone. But no.
No, it's because technology, it's just like the price of your computer. How your computer ten years ago cost you five grand, where now it costs you eight hundred bucks.
Well, let me ask you that.
Is this completely dead now? Or is it gonna be the backup to this?
Well, no. The other problem with what's in your hand there is, that is unreliable, as sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But the biggest problem with what's in your right hand right there? In January of 2013, the FCC imposed a narrowbanding regulation where you have to run on the twelve point five band versus a twenty-four hertz band. That one is non-narrowband capable. I'm sure you remember when Highway had to replace most of their radios in their truck back in two thirteen, because none of them were narrowband capable. We replaced our port, some of our portables back then, non-narrowband capable. If we actually were to key up that old repeater, we're in violation of the 2013 narrowbanding of the FCC, and we're in for good fines. We could be all-
So, just to-
So it doesn't comply?
It makes sense, we don't have a backup.
And that's the thing.
No, that's why we're here.
And that's why we're sitting here today.
Probably more as equally-
Well, wait a minute, alright. You're sitting here to get a new one.
Correct.
So do we have a backup once a-
Is this the backup today?
This will be, this will, if, this-
You're getting this to be-
Uh, this will be the new one, actually, and the current main channel repeater that we have will become the backup.
Will become our backup.
From a, from a, from my, from my perspective, I wouldn't key up that old repeater one, because it works intermittently, and I can't afford for my guys not in the community.
That's the backup one we have now, I'm just a little confused.
Yeah, so what are you, I think, so what are you doing with the old one now?
So the-
The brown one? The big tall one?
Yeah.
Nothing.
So we, we have it. The old, the nineteen forty-two one?
Yes.
I mean, the forty-two-year-old one?
Yes.
It could be nineteen forty-two.
Um, that's gonna get, most likely scrapped.
Yeah, it's, there's no-
And the technology is so old that there's nothing you could-
There's absolutely no reason.
But that answers Dan's question, you're not using it at all now.
We're not using it at all right now, because it is an unreliable piece of equipment that could fail at any moment.
But your comment about the narrowbanding does not refer to the one you have currently.
No, that, yeah. This one here, is what we're using right now, this is, actually, when we bought this ten years ago, this was top of the line state of the art, and it still is a very good-
So this will become the backup.
And the reason for changing it is?
It's, it's an older piece of equipment, this is a newer piece of equipment. That's why we're just gonna take the newer one and use it for the primary, we'll take our older one and use it as a backup.
Do we not have a backup today?
We do not.
No, we do not.
As we sit here, we do not, and this is-
And it is absolutely imperative you have a backup.
It is imperative, and I-
Does it automatically switch if the-
The dispatchers can, two clicks of buttons, they shut one off, they turn one on, they're active.
From dispatch.
From the console, I don't get it.
Because they know that it's not working.
Yeah, when they start calling somebody, and it doesn't work, and you hear noises.
So by way of example, by way of example, during the October microburst, we were up on our main channel, and I started to put into here, I had guys, myself included, traversing the mountains with cars trapped in the wires down, and about a quarter of the way up, we lost our main repeater. So we didn't have communication with the station, with the other emergency responders. At that point, we made a decision on the mountain to switch over to the wind-lagged state system, which we were able to get up on temporarily, until we were able to get our repeater back. The problem with that is, now we're up on a system that everybody in the entire state can hear us, which for an emergency, I don't really care about at that point in time. But it's just not as effective as if we had our own backup repeater. What this will allow us to do, too, is, in addition to having our main channel, our secondary channel, we have two secondary channels right now that are not repeated, one of which our guys use for detail, so they're not taking up airtime on the main channel. And the other channel, my detectives use for their covert operations, because, for obvious reasons. What this will do is, this will take both of those two channels, and then put, and we can use the backup repeater, put both of those channels in the backup repeater, and we can go citywide with those two channels, instead of just being radio to radio. So right now, my detail channel, my detective channel, are only radio to radio, so they can go from probably here to the other cottage street, and then they lose communication with each other. If we, if they operate on the backup repeater, while the main repeater's still up and running, 'cause you can run both at the same time, they're on different channels, they can work both the details and the detective channel on the repeater, on the backup repeater, and you go citywide.
But the new repeater, too?
Correct.
But, right, but when I say new repeater.
But bottom line, this gives you a backup. You know, you do not have a backup.
Oh, absolutely, right.
And the backup that you supposedly do have, that you don't use, is noncompliant.
It's noncompliant, it's non-reliable.
So this gives you the new repeater with the existing repeater as your backup, and those are the channels that the detectives and-
Right, and so, yeah, and operationally, we'll have another channel that's a repeater channel that we can use citywide.
But if either one of those repeaters drops out, for whatever reason, at any time, we still have another one to go right to while I'm getting a repair guy in to fix the other one.
You'll have a backup for, for that, that what you don't have now.
And that's the other thing with the old one, you can't even get parts for.
Right.
So if the thing did really die out, we couldn't, this in, we've only-
So what I wanna stress is, although, although we're spending, you know, approximately ten thousand five hundred dollars for a backup repeater, the reality is, although it's a backup repeater, we're still going to utilize it.
It's gonna be your main repeater though.
Right, right.
No, but, but he's also saying that because he's gonna use the two channels, there's like a, it's not just, oh, wait for a rainy day and I can't communicate.
Yes, when you take a ten thousand five hundred dollar item and just put it in, and wait for the main one to go down, we're gonna use it, that's all we get.
Time out. So this is going to become the backup, 'cause it's refurbished. This is what I misunderstood.
I think redundant, they're kinda redundant.
Yeah.
But the one you have currently-
That's gonna become the backup.
That's the ten-year-old.
That's ten-year-old.
That's gonna become the backup.
It's not gonna be the primary repeater.
That's correct.
That's right.
This one is gonna be the primary repeater. That's all I want.
Yes.
But this allows you to have dual communication when necessary.
Dual communication capabilities, as well as the redundant communication abilities that we need and don't have at this point.
Is that right? Why refurbished and not brand new?
The refurbished, I believe, I don't know, but I think the refurbished one was about ten thousand dollars cheaper than a new, a regular one.
What kind of warranty you got on it?
I believe it was a three-year on everything. What these repeaters are, to talking to the guy we're getting them from, there's a boatload of these repeaters out there that have worked flawlessly for-
Not long.
Not that long. They're only four or five years old. But then, this new thing called P-25, which is going national about digital, digital capabilities and trunking capabilities, and a lot of stuff that even goes right over the top of me, that your big cities use. The MTR-2000 that we're buying does not have those capabilities in it. Something that a city this size doesn't need.
Right.
You know, Boston, yeah, Springfield, Worcester, yeah, they all have that P-25 capabilities. All these MTR-2000s are coming out of places like that, and they've only been in those places four or five years, 'cause the MTR-2000 has not been out that long. So they're pulling them out all over the place and putting the MTR-3000s in. So if we bought that 3000, which is ten grand more, yeah, it's brandy new, but it's full of all kinds of stuff-
We're not gonna-
-that we, in this community, will never use.
So, so back to the point where you're getting what you need.
We're getting what I need, what I'm going over for.
You're getting what you need, and by getting what, what you know you need as a department for your community, you're saving ten grand.
Oh, yeah, that's exactly-
And you're fully competent, the word refurbished does not mean you're losing quality. You're fully competent in its capability. And if I just heard you right, if you were to buy new, you'd have to buy something that you don't need, because you can't buy this one new, you have to buy the next.
We gotta get the next one.
A series.
Yeah, the MTR-2000 is not produced anymore, but replacement parts-
And then you're buying stuff that a small city doesn't need.
Correct. And parts and power supplies and things like that, that do break on those things, are readily available.
On these 2000s?
On the, on MTR-2000, correct.
Uh, is it, it's not necessary, but is it digital communication?
Well, I, and that's what, speaking to that, to upgrade, so the, the next step up of the extra ten thousand dollar-
Extra money.
Extra one, would be digital capable. What, what would it cost it to the entire?
But you'd have to change all your radio.
Yeah, see, these-
No, that's, so, but conversely, what I wanted to explain was how much it would cost us to go eventually, if we bought the new one and we decided we're gonna go there.
These portables that we just bought a few years ago, these are digital capable, but we'd have to buy parts and have something done. I'm not sure, a guy explained it to me once, they're gonna go in and actually have to solder a, a thing in there, and then we reprogram to go digital.
To use it.
But to bring the whole system digitally.
Yep, and then we'd have to replace every cruiser radio. Just there's no way to fix them, we'd have to put brandy new ones.
So it would be more than just an extra ten thousand?
Oh, yeah, you're probably looking at an extra thirty or forty thousand to get the end user up to date.
But there's, there's no need for it, because the digital capability might be necessary in a high-volume radio area like Boston.
Correct.
You don't have that. So analog works.
Correct.
Where are these housed? Is it in a computer room?
Yeah, we have, we actually have a special radio room in the basement that's got proper grounding, its own air conditioning system, you know.
Is it secure?
Oh, absolutely.
Of course, it's in the police station.
Yeah, it's in the basement.
I was gonna say, I don't think there's a more secure place.
I think you're doing it right there. Like, all the, all their rooms are-
Yeah, it's in the block part of the basement, and if any of you guys ever wanna come and look at this stuff firsthand, come see me any day, I'll walk you down there and show it to you.
Is it state bid or anything like that?
Goose Town is state bid.
Yeah, they are state bid.
They got a good price?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So that's-
Yeah, that's it.
Yep.
I just read the refurbished-
Which, the state is perfect, 'cause that way you don't have to worry.
Any more questions?
Dan, did you need roll call? Because you're just like a-
Roll call?
Well, whatever.
Signing entrance.
You know.
'Cause they're gonna hit the roads and-
Um, I don't have any other questions.
I don't yet.
Motion, please?
Motion to have a supplemental appropriation in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars to purchase a new repeater, which will replace the forty-two-year-old police repeater that is currently out of compliance and virtually non-working.
Before the motion, I'm gonna accept the motion, I have one more question, 'cause I know it's gonna come up, but I'm gonna be ready to answer it. Ten thousand five sixty-five versus nine thousand six twenty-nine in the bid?
It's on there. It's explained in the letter, Dan.
It's in the letter?
Yes, it is.
The second paragraph.
Installation cost.
Got it.
Right. Yep, and it adds up to nine thirty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, we need a controller for that.
It's the second paragraph, Dan.
I didn't read the whole thing, I-
It's in the letter, that's right.
Okay, so, motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you, guys. Public hearing will be first meeting, second meeting in November.
Okay.
Because I have to announce, oh, wait a minute, I may have put it in.
Can you check?
I did put it in. Did I? I probably did not.
So is that the sixteen, November sixteen?
Yeah, I didn't think I put it in.
Hold on, hold on.
If it's, if it's in the agenda, I'm sure the mayor will let you know. If it, if there's a public hearing this week, Bob, you'll probably have to come. I don't think it is.
You know what, you might have actually.
It's either November two or November sixteen, and it'll be right outside.
I like public safety things to get going. I don't like to wait. Government takes enough time as it is. 'Cause then, it's gonna take you, what, a month or two to get this?
It's a process.
Yeah, there's definitely a process to it, including the licensing of it, and that's the FCC's sure of it.
You don't have a backup right now.
We do not.
How long have you now?
What do you do, call the state police?
No, we don't.
Something happens?
So this isn't like-
No, this is something we've been working on for years, and we finally were able to get a pull trigger on it.
Oh, they have that?
Yeah, which is, that channel is used, but it's used pretty much for immediate rate of communication to other departments. And everybody in Western Mass, including the state police, can hear it. So usually you don't wanna keep a whole lot of chatter going on there, especially if other people have emergencies needing it as well.
Yeah, then they can't go department to department.
But we can use it, you know, like we, like we had to do with the microburst, we went up on it. But it's not something that we were trying to do.
Okay, well, we wanna get this going fast. Did you find out?
No, but I will, I will text you tomorrow. It's either gonna be eleven two or eleven sixteen.
It's gonna be next week or the week after, or just two weeks after.
Their public hearing starts at six fifty. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I think you're half a tire.
You guys can actually hang on to those if you wanna pass those around to the other, 'cause I can print more.
Alright.
I'd like some, if you could, if it's not a-
You want your own copy? So print one tomorrow.
If it's not a problem, I can-
Yeah, they're in there.
Do you wanna make these? Do you wanna make these?
Yeah, go ahead, you can hang on to those.
Um, we didn't actually-
It's not on the agenda, but how far are we from pulling it? Are we sending it?
What are we talking about? We're on camera, guys, what are we talking about?
We're talking about something on your agenda.
The boat?
He's just asking a question before you leave. Like, how far, like, you know, we talked about that, and that is the rescue boat. I had told them not to do a public hearing on that.
Right, right, okay.
So how, how much more information do we need before we know what we're-
I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're in really good shape.
Okay, so then, when that-
Can you talk about that, or do I have to wait for Dave?
No, this is me. No, this is me, and this is about, um, yeah, this is about-
Let's talk about it right now, we already did the task.
Right, this is about pulling it off the agenda and re, and taking the transfer back.
You don't want it.
Right, well, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying I wanna pull the transfer back, and then we'll provide you the rest of the information on why. So I think we're in a position to do that.
Yeah, I would say so, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
We wanna provide you with more information on it, so when I wanna remove the transfer.
Then at the next council meeting, you need to request it in writing, it's required, I thought.
Right, so, but that has to go in, that'll have to go on your next agenda.
The one that's being issued tomorrow?
Yeah, well, my deadlines, you know, Thursday morning, just like everybody else, I follow the deadlines.
I don't-
To the T.
I don't need an explanation except to know that if it was needed, you would've put it in there, so I'm only gonna assume-
No, but you'll need it, I wanna, will provide you with an explanation when we're, when we're ready to remove it. So that was my question, that was the question.
So, we are going to put this aside and not discuss it.
Thank you, very much.
Because you're not ready to discuss it, or maybe it'll be one of those.
Right, exactly, we wanna provide you with more information.
Uh, seven fifty for the free cash to general, jeez, I don't like saving money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
You, take care.
So if you could also, tomorrow I'll text, text you about the date, if you could also give me more information and make sure we're ready to go on that, so I can get that on the agenda tomorrow morning?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night.
So obviously, I don't think you need any information about this at all.
See you later.
You know?
We're saving you money, we're saving money.
You know, we're just trying to, we're just trying to make sure that, you know, we have money in our general stabilization and in our capital stabilization, so that when we have, you know, some major issues, and hopefully we don't, we have the funding there. So it's a matter of building up our stabilization, which at one time got, was getting a little low, you know, one time we were using it to supplement our budget.
So an example of a capital stabilization is a huge GPW truck, a fire truck or something like that going down, that obviously you need immediately, you can't wait to see. If you had free cash, maybe you'd use it, or you would borrow the money if it was necessary, but using the general sta, using the capital stabilization prevents that.
Capital stabilization.
In an emergency situation.
I don't need an emergency situation for capital stabilization, but it is to prepare to have capital, so when we have years where we don't have a good free cash, as you can see, all the, all the capitals that we put forward this year, that I put in front of you, were all out of free cash. So we're just fortunate, this year and last year, we've had very good free cash years, so the idea is to take advantage of that and put, and that's why we created a capital, a capital stabilization fund, because there were many years, which is very sad and unfortunate, when we didn't have free cash and we didn't even do capital expenditures. So we want to ensure that we will always be able to do capital expenditures, because other than that, you fall so far behind, that is difficult. And the general stabilization fund is exactly what you know, you can use it for, so the capital is for capital purposes, and the general is for any other purposes that we needed.
By statute, if you had an emergency in which the state decided to do a nine C cut, you needed more, could you use general, I mean, capital stabilization in an emergency for that, or is that specific? I'm only saying, i- in the worst-case scenario, could the money be moved? I mean, that's a really, hopefully never-seeing worst case.
So you can-
It, we set it up specifically for capital.
I know, I'm just asking.
And as you can see, we have almost twice as much in general as we do in, in capital.
But if you had that problem?
Yeah, if it came, if it came up, like catastrophe and we-
Is there state law that prevents you from doing that?
Not, not-
Not that you know of?
It's the same vote to change of purpose as it is to take the money out.
Okay, so you're okay then, if you had to do it? I'm not saying you never do it, I'm just looking at the worst-case scenario.
Right, you're looking at worst-case scenario, but you also understand the intent of creating a capital.
Absolutely.
So that we, it's almost like, what I wanna do is, you know, how the ci, the city, you know, financially stable, where we know, say, we, say this year was a really bad free cash year, where, that means we don't have any money for capital, that's what we use it for, so now we do. So that way, we could say, okay, well, bad free cash year, but let's, you know, we need to do this, this and that, like these trucks, all these things we would've used capital stabilization for if we didn't have the free cash. So hopefully, you know, we're-
But I like that too, like, because there are years, we've been lucky last few years, but there's gonna be a year when you only get a hundred thousand in free cash, and you, you do have capital needs that if you wait on, I remember during Mike's reign, we had years where we couldn't buy a police cruiser, and we always tried to switch them out, because they put too many miles on them, you know, we tried to buy one every year, we couldn't do it.
Which is why, which is why when I came in, we had a, we had a, a large issue of just going through things like, you've gotta be kidding me, you know, things that we have to do, but you, you can't always do if you don't have the fun. So this is just, you know, again, it's financial planning, keeping our money where we can use it for the things we need.
Yep.
But I also like to compliment-
And trying to add to it all the time, you know, like, you'll notice that even though we had a good free cash year this year and last year, we didn't spend it all. So part of the reason we had a good free cash this year is because we didn't spend all of the free cash last year.
And I wanna say, you're being conservative with that, which I agree with, because you're looking at the priorities in each department. You have a huge capital plan, which is millions of dollars, and you can't buy everything, so you do it in a priority way, but by not spending every dime, you're also putting that rainy day. And when you said the thing about nine C cuts, that's always gonna be there, even though they-
You never know.
So, great.
Or, or, not to, not to bring up a, you know, a sore subject, but there were, there were years, and you'll remember them, Dan,